Three hearings to get into, and I'm sure we have some other administrative tasks. Before I begin, I need to ask if anybody present is making a recording of tonight's meeting. I'll announce for the record that I have an audio recorder. Kathy has an audio recorder. We use this to help prepare the minutes. And Lake Cam is making a video recording for use on cable. The first item we have is the Betts hearing, which is a repeat of hearing that occurred, of decisions made back in 2017, which was appealed to the court, and the court found deficiency with one part of it, so we're going to take a second look at this. The Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals, acting in accordance with master under laws, Chapter 48, is meant that will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, February 20, 2020, at 7:00 PM in the Lakeville Public Library, Fort Precincting Street, upon the petition of Ken and Zinta Betts. They request a clarification by way of a modification to their March 30, 2017 decision, case number 17-02. The subject property is located at 74 Lakeside Avenue, as this is as provided by the Lakeville bylaws. And is the petitioner present?
Yes.
So I think we're going to, I think for safety reasons and clarity reasons, we should probably go back over the history of this. You had a, you probably remember better than we do, since we've done so many in that many months in between. You had a petition to, was it to rebuild a house?
It's to raise and rebuild, um, is an existing home. Over again?
Yeah. I get yelled at if we don't record it very well, so.
Okay. Um, there's an existing home at 74 at Lakeside. It's a cottage, and what we wanted to do was tear that down and then rebuild a home of ranch style within a footprint of 32 by 74, which includes a two-car garage. So the property is almost an acre of land. It's a very long, thin, narrow lot with about 50 feet of frontage on the lake. So we had, we had believed that we needed a special permit along with the variance, but after going through the whole process, realizing we all, we only needed the variant, the special permit rather.
Right. And that, and quite honestly, I think that was a mistake on my part for not catching that at the time. A variance in Lakeville's bylaws, a variance is really to give you permission to do something out of the ordinary that's based on some deficiency in the property, like a ledge or a valley or hollow or something, an outcropping that prevents you from building in a way that conforms to the bylaw. And I don't think that that condition was precisely true, even though we tried to make it so. And the court, I think, agreed with the person who appealed your decision. Have you done, have you built? Have you done it?
No, we haven't been able to do anything on it.
Okay. So, and nothing has changed? Your plans have not changed?
Correct.
Okay. So, let's see. You're not asking for anything different than you asked for in 2017?
Correct.
And I brought a copy of the decision papers we prepared back then, and I think for the benefit of my colleagues on the board, I could read the findings as we condensed them, based upon your request, your petition, I mean, and our findings during the hearing when you presented all the data and we grappled with it. We found that the property was zoned residential and has an existing dwelling on it. Is the dwelling occupied now?
Um, we, we've been there. We've been using it.
Okay. So it's livable?
Correct.
The property is non-conforming because the lot is undersized and because the existing dwelling intrudes into the setbacks on both sides and at the shorefront. The existing dwelling has a fully enclosed deck that is within several feet of the shorefront. The proposed dwelling will have a slightly less intrusive setback on one property sideline and a setback on the other property sideline that is less intrusive than the existing concrete bulkhead wall. The proposed dwelling will be a single-story structure in order to preserve the best view from adjacent properties. The stated size of the building is an error because it inadvertently included the footprint of the attached garage. The proposed project will retain the original deck in the same location, but will remove all enclosures. The CBA finds that a temporary garage structure and a basketball play area belonging to a neighbor span across the property line and intrude into the petitioner's property into the setback margin. Intrude onto the petitioner's property. The CBA finds that the use is not noxious, harmful, or hazardous, is socially and economically desirable, and will meet an existing need. The advantages of the proposed use outweigh any detrimental effects. The applicant has no reasonable alternative available to accomplish this purpose in a manner more compatible with the character of the immediate neighborhood. The proposal generally conforms to the principles of good engineering, sound planning, and correct land use. I don't think we, honestly, I don't think we have to go back over all the details if nothing has changed since 2017. The court did agree with our findings and what we had published, disagreed with the, with the variance, and we believe a variance is not needed, so it was a mistake to even ask for a variance and for us to consider it. Is there anybody present who would like to comment or address on this petition for Do board members have any questions? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Alan Smith, 76 Lakeside Ave. I'd like to, first and foremost, affirm the comments of the Betts, that in fact they've been using the property as of late. The property doesn't have running water. It doesn't have an existing water system. It has a septic system from the 1950s. So it's, it's not a usable property despite the, the representation of its current use. It's been a seasonal home up until their purchase. And then first and foremost, you know, we respectfully ask of the committee to consider your, your own zoning bylaws and our disagreement with this application and your alignment on special permit. The initial application for the special permit and variance included plans that were not consistent with your zoning bylaws. It didn't include basic information like dividing neighbors' septic system, dividing neighbors' wells, things of that nature, which are minimum requirements of this committee and your zoning process. We also note that this, this reapplication or this request of your committee to modify is based on new information or new request. The Superior Court heard this, this, this action, provided their opinion and provided their opinion under Section 7.4. They had opportunity at that time to request an appeal or appeal that decision. So it would appear inappropriate that this board would be hearing a request today for a modification and basically bringing in a new code section for which you're going to, going to approve a special permit. Separate from that, we want to remind this committee that it's a substandard lot. It's a 50-foot wide lot from, from beginning to end. The setbacks on the sides are a minimum of, of 20 feet. Curved properties, 460 square feet. They're requesting not, not a modification, which is what's consistent with your special permit, but they're requesting a raising of this building and a replacement, replacement with a building that's almost five times its size. That's not a modification which would be consistent with approval of a special permit in accordance with your zoning bylaws. This is, this is truly a new application or a new request for clarification. So it isn't even appropriate for this board to be hearing this, this request for modification. And subsequent, you know, if you in fact approved this, it would be inappropriate for the board to do that. I'd like to submit.
The use of the word modification in this case, Mr. Smith, refers to a modification to the decision, not a modification to their plans or the house or the property.
Correct. Absolutely correct. And our counsel would suggest that that's, that's not appropriate of this committee. It's already been heard by the court. The court, the Superior Court, provided opinion under Section 7.4. They're not requesting relief under Section 6.1.1.
In addition to 7.4.
Which, which looks and appears like a new request. They're not, they're not requesting for a new, new application. They're requesting a modification, which is, you know, not, not consistent with, with process.
6.1.3, which is what you're concerned about.
Um, the, the additional section that they're, 6.1.3? Yes, correct.
6.1.3 says, "Pre-existing non-conforming structures or uses may be changed, extended, or altered by special permit from the Board of Appeals, finding that such change, extension, or alteration is not substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming structure or use."
Yes, that's a change in their request. If you look back at their 2017 application, they requested relief under Section 7.4 only. Now they're here asking for clarification or modification, basically on, on an opinion that's already been provided of the Superior, the Superior Court. They can't do that. They have, they have to reapply.
As you just said, the, you, you pointed out that the, the structure that's on the property now doesn't have proper septic, it doesn't have proper water, it doesn't have this, it doesn't have that, and they're proposing to build a house that would have that. Wouldn't that be better for the community and the environment?
That's not the question at hand here today. The question at hand today is, is it appropriate for this, for this committee to provide relief under a pre-existing application, under a new section, code section of your zoning laws, you know, for which the original application wasn't, wasn't requested?
Well, we have a petition, and we have to act on the petition. We, we can't.
I respect that.
We can't reject the petition, so we have to act on the petition.
I'm not asking you to. I'm simply expressing our.
I, I appreciate that, I appreciate that you've expressed your point of view. I think you expressed your point of view three years ago also.
And I'd like to have a submission, if you'd like. I can approach?
You may, of course.
Just with a copy of our, if you can, Smith, has a record?
Mr. Smith, shall I read this aloud?
If you don't have to, but if you might.
Well, I think for the record, I'd like to, and I'd like the board members to hear. Mr. Smith is submitting a memo dated today, and he states his facts. On March 30, 2017, the Board of Appeals issued a decision granting to Betts a special permit pursuant to Article 7, Section 7.4, and a variance pursuant to Article 8, 8.2.2. In a timely fashion, we appealed the decisions of the Zoning Board of Appeals to trial court of the Commonwealth Superior Court Department, Plymouth Division. After trial, the Superior Court issued a decision which has not been appealed. The court held the zoning board's grant of special permit and denied the zoning board's grant of variance. Recently, Ken and Zinta Betts filed a general petition with the zoning board and appended thereto certain ancillary documents not in compliance with the Lakeville bylaws. The general petition states that they are seeking relief of a special permit under Section 6.1.3 and 7.4. With an asterisk, they then state that relief is respectfully requested for clarification, emphasis supplied, by way of a modification, emphasis, you've underlined it to emphasize, of the March 30, 2017 decision to reflect the desired relief being granted solely by special permit and their project to continue as proposed without the need for a variance. This is a highly unusual request. For reasons more particularly stated herein, it is respectfully suggested that the current application is deficient. First, it is seeking a modification of 2017 decision that has already been appealed, such appeal resulting in a judicial determination. The timeframe for the modification or approval has long since expired. Second, the instant, the instant petition is requesting a declaratory determination that the Betts project, as presented in 2017, and as it perhaps continues to be presented, did not require variance. It is respectfully suggested that such a determination rests with a zoning enforcement officer. The board has the right to grant or deny requested zoning relief. It is not appropriate, it is not the appropriate form to seek, to seek zoning advice or to be told what relief is required for a specific project. I don't think anybody's telling us what relief is required. Asking for relief in this, on this project under 7.4 and 6.1.3 is pro forma. That's quite standard, and that's what's normally done in many projects we've, petitions we've considered over the last number of years that we've been doing this. I'm not, I'm not 100% clear on what your objection is.
What are objecting to the modification? The opportunity for modification requires a new application. The fact that they're, they're looking to, now requesting the board a relief under a separate code section using the same group of documents and simply asking you for clarity as opposed to asking for a decision, it's not the board, it's not this board's place to provide clarity. It's this board's place to have a decision.
Why don't?
If you so choose to, to decide in favor of that belief, we understand. And, um, from our concern with the board doing so.
It, it's not at all uncommon for, let's see, how do I say this the right way? It's not at all uncommon to have petitions submitted to us that don't have the clearest of English language.
Agreed.
And it's, among other things, it's our job to try and do what's best for as many people as possible. I think, I'm going back three years, but I think in 2017, when we first considered this petition and we made our decision, we felt that it was probably better that this property be modernized and improved and made more safe and more environmentally sound, things that you pointed out a few minutes ago about the, the current property. So I, for one on the board, think that we are consistent, our actions are consistent with the intent and purpose of the bylaw. And while they may have asked for a modification, maybe that wasn't the right thing, they really want to get permission to build their house.
And I ask for clarity when, when you're addressing special permit. Because do your zoning bylaws allow for, in this interpretation of the language? It talks about modifications, it talks about alterations. It does not talk about raising an existing building and replacing it. They're effectively moving the building. There's not a single piece of that footprint of the new building that's going to sit anywhere near the existing building. So it's, it's not a modification which a special permit allows for. This, this is a new proj, a new project.
This is a mod, they're asking for a modification to the decision, not a modification to the plans. I've already asked the petitioner if the plans are the same, and they said that nothing has changed.
Yes, correct. But for clarity, the existing property is, is proposed to be raised, and a new property is proposed to be built with setbacks at something less than the existing in a footprint that's almost five times the existing home. That's not a special permit. Alteration, modification, that's, that's, that's a different, that's, that's zoning relief. That's not a special permit.
Let me read, let me read the bylaw again. Pre-existing non-conforming structures or uses may be changed, underlined in the bylaw, changed, extended, or altered by special permit from the Board of Appeals, finding that such change, extension, or alteration is not substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming structure or use.
So we're talking about a footprint that's five times larger?
Well, this is your opinion.
Talking about a raising of a building? We're talking about 460 square feet versus 2,200 square feet?
We, we grappled with that three years ago, and at that time decided that the, that was not more detrimental, that change in use or, and change in structure was not more detrimental than what exists there now. That was the decision we made then, and the court agreed with us.
On the special permit? They did not agree with you on the variance.
And this, and the, and the modified petition that we received does not address a variance.
Correct.
There's no variance.
It addresses a modification.
So you're, you're trying to object to this whole thing because the application, the petition, three years ago, said variance?
No. I'm objecting to this, this board hearing a petition for a modification of an existing application that you provided an opinion on, the Superior Court provided their opinion on, and they had opportunity to appeal at that time. There's, there's a timeframe in which they could have appealed that decision and brought up this modification. They didn't do that, and now they're coming back to you. So our contention is that it's, it's not appropriate for this board to be hearing a petition to modify, for relief from that special permit after the court has already provided opinion on it.
We have to hear it because they went through the proper procedure to petition this board. We have to hear it. And if we don't hear it, then they get what they want regardless of where you are or where we are. A constructive grant. So where should we go?
I'm hearing that, and I'm expressing our concern to the extent that you prove.
Your, your concern has been noted, and is in the file. Thank you.
Just curious, maybe clarify from my understanding. This is a new application. Although they did refer to, on the second page, the term clarification and modification, this isn't the same existing application. They had to go through the same process to.
Uh huh.
So although they may, from a terminology standpoint, have used clarification and modification and referred back to, you know, the, a petition that they had brought before this board, connects us two years ago, this is a new application. Now, they're referring to the information they provided us two and a half years ago, stating that everything's going to be the same, but to refer back to we're changing the original application, they have to go through the same process and, and apply for it. They're referring to a lot of stuff in a prior application, but this is a, this is a new application.
It is.
So the whole point of modifications to a prior application, I think he's trying to wordsmith us into thinking that they're, they're, we're changing something that we did before.
I don't think we're changing anything. That's why I read, at the beginning, I read aloud all of our findings from the original decision.
Yeah. We're, we're using that as a reference point, but this is a, a new application for a special permit.
Right. But I don't think, because we did this before, I don't think we have to redo it again.
Oh, I, I agree. I don't think we need to go through the exercise of speaking about it again because it's all the same information, but I just, I don't think we need to concern ourselves with modifying any prior applications. This is like starting from scratch, just having, already read the book before, so you know the information.
We have a December 18 memo, December 18, 2019 memo from, to us. Oh, I'm sorry, to the, to the Betts. I beg your pardon, from Nate Darling, the building inspector. It says, "Dear Mr. and Mrs. Betts, I've received and reviewed your permit application to raise and rebuild a single-family home located at 74 Lakeside Ave. in the town of Lakeville. On March 16, 2017, the Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals voted to grant a special permit and variance to demolish and remove an existing dwelling, but to maintain a 12-foot by 16-foot open deck to replace porch and to construct a 32-foot by 74-foot ranch-style home with attached garage on the subject property. The March 30, 2017 decision was subsequently appealed to the Superior Court. On October 24, 2019, the Superior Court issued a decision affirming the board's grant of special permit under Section 7.4 of the zoning bylaw and annuling the board's grant of variance under Section 8.2.2 of the zoning bylaw. Whereas it is not possible for me to clearly bifurcate the actual zoning relief between the special permit and the variance, I must deny your building permit application. Zoning Board of Appeals clarification by way of a modification to the March 30, 2017 decision to reflect the desired relief being granted solely by special permit will be required to continue the project as proposed. If you're agreed by this decision, you may file an appeal to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and a hearing before then may be scheduled by completing the petition application form available from town clerk. If you have any questions, et cetera." I'm not sure this says anything different than we've been saying.
I just wanted to say, this board has entertained modifications on many projects, and, you know, we, we didn't have the people, they just came in, they asked for a modification, and we granted it if we felt it was granted, or should be granted. So this is unusual for us to.
We've, no.
And I think we're talking about semantics here. I really do. I think we're talking semantics.
We're, we're, sometimes the word modification tonight is being used to imply the details of the proposed project, a modification to the project, the size of a room, the size of a setback, the number of something.
And we've entertained.
And we've done those. But the word modification tonight is a modification to the decision that was granted three years ago, not with regard to the, the technical details of the proposed project, but with regard to the wording, because we had inadvertently included a variance, and the variance has been removed.
We've done that with LeBaron, actually, where they came back and changed the whole project, and we allowed it. I'm just saying that there are instances where we have entertained that type of request. They came back just as the Betts did, and they proposed what they wanted to do. Actually, they had a whole new project. They weren't just saying, we want to drop some wording. They were saying, we want to change the whole project, modification.
Is this a thing?
Yeah. So it's my opinion that a lot of this is semantics.
The, they're asking for a modification to the decision.
I know.
Not proposing a modification to their plans.
I know that.
Okay. Anybody else wish to speak to this petition?
I'd like to speak again, if you'd like.
Mr. Smith?
I have a copy of the package, so there's some of it. And it references as a part of the, the cover page, an asterisk, and they're looking for relief with respect to requested for clar, relief is respectfully requested for clarification by way of the modification of the March 30, 2017 decision to reflect the desired relief being granted solely by special permit and to continue as proposed. That's not a new application. They're looking for specific relief from, from an opinion you already provided and from which the Superior Court has provided an opinion. They provided an illegal opinion, and there's a basis there for which they could have done, they could have provided an appeal. It doesn't allow them to come back to this committee, unlike some of your other applicants who may not have gone through a legal process to affirm your decision.
I think the, I think the conundrum, I think the problem that we're all faced with is, we had issued a decision that was based mostly on their request for special permit, but also addressed their request for variance, which was in error, and the judge told us that. And so now they're asking for us to, I believe, the request. And so now they're asking for us to, I believe the request is for us to render a, a decision based solely on the constraints of a special permit or based on the basis of a special permit with no regard to a variance. I think that's, that's exactly what this, that's what I read into this.
I agree.
Being granted solely by special permit and our project to continue as proposed.
I agree, but again, our contention is that this project is not, not the type of project that would be subject to special permit. This, this is a raising of a building. This is replacing with a footprint almost five times bigger in a very different part of the property.
Mr. Smith, that's your opinion.
With smaller setbacks and-
That's your opinion.
It is.
The board's opinion, three years ago, was that the change that they were proposing was no more detrimental than what was there. And that's the wording and the structure and the constraints and the, and the, that's the structure of the bylaw, the wording of the bylaw. And the decision that we made, you're not on the board, uh, you're welcome to join the board at some point, but if the decision we made at the time was that in our opinion, it was no more detrimental than the existing situation.
And, and the Superior Court affirmed that.
And you happened, and the court affirmed it. You disagree with it, you don't like that, but the court liked it, we liked it, and they certainly like it.
The court said timeout. This is not a, this is not a, a renovation of an existing structure. The court said no, this is a new building. The, the special permit is appropriate, but this is a new building, they're raising a building and putting a new building with, with setbacks that encroach further upon the existing setbacks of the existing property. They all require consideration and it wasn't considered.
It wasn't considered three years ago.
If I could step into this a little bit deeper. The court has already affirmed the special permit. They annulled the variance, so I don't even see why we're arguing about it because the court said that the special permit is okay, so I don't see-
Is there anybody else who would like to speak for or against?
Do you entertain a motion?
Double entertain a motion.
Make a motion to grant the special permit, um, as applied law.
Motion's been made to-
Hand-seconded.
Hand-seconded. John made the motion, Dave seconded the motion. Any further discussion?
John, I need a clarification if this is going to be a new special permit or if that's going to be that permit with the word variance struck.
It is going to be, it is going to be that, that permit with the word variance struck.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion from the board? Hearing none. All in favor, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained?
Thank you.
Thank you. It is 7:34 and next on our agenda is the Chapin, is that the word? Did I pronounce it right?
Yes.
Chapin?
Good, it does pronounce it right.
The Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals, acting in accordance with Mass. and Roas Chapter 40A is amended, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, February 20th, 2020 at 7:00 PM in the Lakeville Public Library, 4 Precinct Street, upon the petition of Christopher S. Chapin. A special permit under 613 and 74 is requested to allow the roof to be raised and to add an additional 300 square feet of living space to an existing non-conforming dwelling located on a non-conforming lot at 4 Pilgrim Road. The property is owned by Nyla Lawn?
Nine Lion.
Say it again?
Nine Lion.
Nine Lion. By Nine Lion, Inc. This is provided by the Lakeville bylaws. You're on, sir.
Uh, essentially I purchased an existing home that had a very flat roof, uh, with a lot of safety concerns, say the very least. I've restructured the building, um, which has required me to increase the, the peak of the roof, which has allowed me space upstairs to be essentially a more, be a livable space, obviously provided I provide proper access, um, et cetera. Um, alls I'm looking for is to add to existing square footage of the home by actually 286 square feet, um, allowing for the, the property and its existing footprint to go from 1,200 and I believe 20 square feet, uh, and adding a 286. So not adding bedrooms or anything along those lines, just, uh, a loft area with a small den.
Do you have, um, did you happen to bring pictures of the existing dwelling?
I do not have the existing pictures.
It's a flat roof?
Yes, well, uh, flattish. You may have some, I, I'm sure I can pull some up here.
No, we got it right here. This is it.
Yes, right.
Pine trees, glad.
I've also removed about six of those. Uh, I had one fall last week that fell about six feet from the house itself, so I'm ducking and dodging pine trees as I go through construction.
You're not changing the footprint?
Not at all.
You're just going up the story.
Dr. and there, I'm not impeding anybody's visual ability to see the pond, which I still can't see the pond from where I'm located regardless.
What's the, um, I'm sure it's right here under my nose. What's the lot size?
Uh, a little over 10,000 square feet. So I'm not increasing percentage or anything.
No. I'm not familiar with Pilgrim Road. Where is it?
Uh, Churchill Shores.
Oh. Okay. What do we have? We have a, for the record, a February 19th, 2020 memo from the Conservation Commission. The location was re-inspected on February 19th. There are no wetlands on this property and no further action is required. We have a February 7th memo from the Board of Health. The Board of Health reviewed the petition for the above property at their February 5th meeting. The board has no issues with this petition moving forward. We have a memo from, um, Planning Board dated February 18th at their Thursday, January 23rd, 2020 meeting. The Planning Board reviewed the above referenced petition for hearing from the Board of Appeals. The board has no comments on this petition, so no one else seems to be concerned about this. Is anybody present who wishes to comment on this petition to raise the roof?
Well, as always, I have a problem.
Let's hear it.
That's this little room that's right at the end of the law.
Mm-hmm. I saw a little room too, but we got scolded about that once, remember?
Yeah, I did, but it's still a problem with me.
Okay.
Could we remove the door?
Sorry. Yeah, it's just a den area that's going to be used for an office essentially.
Yeah, I understand.
Fair enough.
The concern we've raised before is that a future owner of the house might see that as another bedroom, the kids' room, the nursery.
And that's why I've actually left, purposely left out during a closet meeting, but I don't have any problem leaving out a door as well.
You know I'm going to oppose that, Dave. You know, you know we're not supposed to do that.
We're not supposed to.
It's against the law to do that.
We got scolded by the townhouse.
It's against the law. You can pay with the loose and a hot dish.
He too knows it. But we appreciate your complaints.
Appreciate your chip and wop.
I, I don't see anything with this. Did I ask if anybody wished to speak for or against? Anybody on the board have any comments now that David has?
Has expressed his opinion.
Expressed his opinion, right. Would someone care to make a motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
Make a motion to approve or to deny?
To approve, okay.
Any restrictions in your motion?
No.
Motion has been made to approve. Dave has seconded. John made the motion, Dave seconded the motion. Any further discussion on the motion to approve? Hearing none. All in favor, please.
Aye.
Aye, not opposed.
Okay.
You know the routine?
Yep.
Good.
Thank you.
Because I never remember. We will open our 40B application. The Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals, acting in accordance with Mass. and Roas Chapter 40B is amended, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, February 20th, 2020 at 7:00 PM in the Lakeville Public Library, 4 Precinct Street, upon the petition of Paul E. Turner Corp., Paul Turner. A comprehensive permit pursuant to MGL Chapter 40B is requested to construct 16 three-bedroom residences and eight duplex buildings. The project will be a 16-unit condominium located at 44 and 46 Rhode Island Road as provided by the Lakeville bylaws.
Evening, Mr. Chairman. Another member of the Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals. Uh, my name's Mike LaChamacy. I'm an attorney for now this middle of Mass. And I'm here tonight on behalf of Mr. Turner, uh, with respect to his request for a comprehensive permit from you folks. Also with the name of Bob Forbes from Zenith Consulting Engineers. Um, as the advertisement said, we are seeking approval to construct 16 dwellings and eight duplex buildings at the property at 44, 46 Rhode Island Road. Uh, we're putting up a variety of renderings and all that stuff, um, and we're asking for the board to approve it. But I'd like to girass a couple of jurisdictional issues. As the board may recall, there's, there's three jurisdictional issues that we need to, to show you properly before you. The first one is, is we have to be a limited dividend organization. Effectively what that means is we, we, uh, we do not get a full profit for this project. We have a profit limitation and the, the profit limitation is set by subsidizing the agency and we will enter into a regulatory agreement with them. Uh, the regulatory agreement will be recorded at the Registry of Deeds and that'll be the, the document that, that governs the profit that can be made on this project. The second, um, prong is we need a project eligibility letter. In your packet, you will see a letter from Mass. Housing dated, uh, December 6th, 2019 that says this project is eligible for this, this, this permit. The last prong is we have to demonstrate control of the site. In your application package, there's, there's two deeds for lot four and five, which was right here. I'll ask Mr. Forbes to go into it later. So we satisfy all the jurisdictional requirements and this application is properly before you. Um, so just, just to give a broad overview, then I'm going to ask Bob Forbes to come and give a more detailed explanation. Our site is about 2.8 acres in area. Um, we have a small little area of wetland. Um, we're going to the Conservation Commission next week to determine if it's in fact a wetland. If it is, we will have to file a notice of intent, um, for that portion of the project that is affected by that. But I, I don't think we're gonna, I don't think the Conservation Commission's gonna find that that is a wetland. Um, we have 16 units. They're all three-bedroom units, two and a half baths, approximately 1,700 square feet in size. Uh, they're duplex buildings, uh, is, we'll demonstrate here later on. They're, they're side by side. Uh, they're laid out on a 20-foot road. It'll be a private way. It'll never, ever be a public way. It'll be maintained by the condominium association of which everyone will pay dues and their, their plowing will be taken care of, their trash, their septic systems, it'll all be taken care of by the condominium. The major living is on the first floor and all the bedrooms are on the third floor. Um, I guess at this time it probably makes sense to kind of go over what the site's all about and go from there.
So Mike already introduced me to it. I'm Bob Forbes from Zenith Consulting Engineers. Um, just to, to give you an overview of the project, um, this is the surrounding area we're on Rhode Island Road, address 44 and 46 Rhode Island Road. Um, as Mike said, it's a, it's a 2.8 acre posse that we're asking to put, put this development on at this time. And this is a portion of the former, uh, Lakeville Hospital site. Um, this, there, this is a blow-up of the Mass. GIS website. Uh, we had heard some concerns about there being veronal pools on the site and we just wanted to address that. Um, as you can see, this area that I highlighted in orange is our site. Um, this is in the little stars, uh, certified veronal pools. This is a, the width of my thumb is 200 feet, so this is about a thousand feet away from our site. This one's further away. This is the one that's actually in, uh, in the, um, in the Mary Lou's drive-thru, the drive-thru through Mary Lou's Coffee goes around that veronal pool. There, uh, this is the only habitat area for endangered species way over here, more than a thousand feet, about a half mile away. Um, and there are a couple sort of, uh, potential veronal pools, one right here and again, over a thousand feet away. So we don't, we don't have anything like that anywhere near our site. And as Mike mentioned, there's a small vegetated area just on the edge of our property, um, that exhibits some wetland's vegetation. It's very small and it's isolated, so we're, we're bringing that to the Conservation Commission to get some clarification on that from them. As far as the project goes, got the property line outlined in orange here. Um, and we've, we're proposing 16 units. It's eight duplexes. Um, and as Mike said, they're represented, some of these, uh, renderings, uh, show exactly what the, what's going on with the site. This, this is a, this is a good represent, representation of, this is an actual colored rendering of a landscaping plan, but it's, makes it easy to see the units and the layout of the, of the project. Um, we've got, um, 60, this, uh, 16 units, as I said, there's 62 parking spaces off the road, which, which comes to 3.8 spaces per unit. Um, in developments like this, we find that that's more than enough. Um, we have a 20, as Mike mentioned, a 20-foot wide road. Um, but I also want to mention we have this, this cul-de-sac turnaround here and this, the width of the turnaround is 30 feet paved. And the reason for that is we, we put a template on this to make sure that the fire, all the fire apparatus in town could easily get into the site and easily make their way around that cul-de-sac and get out of the site. That's why that's 30 foot wide there. Um, also Cape Cod berm, a one-foot wide Cape Cod berm on either side of the road. So that's really gives an added two feet of pave. For utilities, we're proposing that all of the units be served by onsite septic systems. Soil is quite good here. All the correct tests showed that we had sandy, uh, sandy soils or loamy sands, which are the best two types of soil for that type of system. Um, we've got water, municipal water fed from, um, Rhode Island Road. Running a water main right down the road. There's an existing hydrant just off the edge of where we're coming in and, um, we met with the fire chief. He stated that there were, with this hydrant here, there was no need for a hydrant on the, on the road due to the shortness of the roadway, but, um, when we met with the city of Taunton about the water system, which we'd be getting water from, they asked for a hydrant for, to clean out the lines and whatnot. So there's a, we have an existing hydrant here right at the edge of the roadway and we're proposing another hydrant inside. Um, these are, these are comments that, uh, Mr. Laney, the, this town consultant had mentioned, so I've, I've, he mentioned that and we had already done it, so I wanted to bring this revised plan and to show you exactly where we're at now. Uh, Mr. Laney, again, his comments were excellent. Um, and as I told him, as usual, it makes the project better when you review something rather than gets it confused. Uh, we've, I've put together a letter responding to all of Nick's comments. We've, I've put together a letter responding to all of Nick's comments, and we agree with everything that he's asked for. There was one question of, he suggested that we put a sidewalk in on this side of the road from here to here, from the cul-de-sac to the entrance, and we're just asking the board to not require that, just because it really is a sidewalk that goes from nowhere to nowhere. There's currently no sidewalk on Rhode Island Road at this time.
Hold that thought, would you?
Yeah, exactly.
Hold that, hold that, and we'll come back to that.
Yeah, we understand. We spoke with the building inspector about that also, so we're not, just so the board knows, we're asking for that. We're not going to fight, if the board wants that, we're going to put it on the sidewalk. It's simple as that. It's just going to eat up a little bit more lawn space and make the site a little less green. So that's our reasoning for it. Excuse me. Site will also be serviced by gas, which is also located out on Rhode Island Road. And for the drainage system, we're collecting the runoff and catch basins, and we're bringing them to infiltration basins. Again, I had mentioned earlier that we have nice sandy soils on the site, so we're infiltrating the water. We're taking everything for up to about the 50-year storm, which is a six-inch rainfall in 24 hours, and infiltrating all of that onsite to infiltration basins, one here and one here. Small amount, in the 100-year storm, which is essentially a hurricane, will discharge from the basins through the overflow spillways, but it's much less than what currently goes there.
The problem is, it seems like we're getting a couple of 100-year storms every year.
Yeah. It's a design storm. The amount is different than the intensity of a design storm. The intensity of the design storms, we do, much greater than just a seven-inch rainfall over 24-hour span. That's where some confusion is at. The peak of the intensity goes up much higher if you look at a hydrograph of the storm. So as far as the landscaping goes, I can come back to this plan. I'd like to take credit for it, but my company did not do this plan. This is a nice-looking plan, and it shows where we're proposing on landscaping and lawn areas. You can see the infiltration basins designated here. And just to point it out, on this plan, there's a total of 87 trees proposed and 102, I'm sorry, 287 shrubs and additional perennial plantings for a total of 1,142 plantings on the site, which is an average of 71 plantings per unit. So Mr. Turner is not sparing any expense. He's built close to 20 houses, I believe, in town and has a reputation in town already and wants this to be a really good-looking project and something that he and the town can be proud of.
So I don't know if the board can see, but we've got renderings of all the various styles of the houses. Again, it's a duplex unit. They're all orientated a little differently. This one faces the street, this one faces the street, this side faces the main street. We've tried to break it up a little bit, so we don't have that, you know, that wall effect. We've got some nice renderings. We have the rendering looking into the site, our first drawing here next to the empty easel. Obviously, you can see some of the plantings in the front, but, you know, the rendering's just a picture. It doesn't really capture everything that's there, but at least it gives you a better idea of what's going on, and height of the buildings and all that. Our second picture here is a burgundy house, and you'll see we have another color at the end, a tan house. We're not trying to have all the same colors, but there's a third color there someplace. It's down on the floor. It's a tan color. It's green color, I'm sorry. So they're fairly attractive houses. Each are going to have their own little furnace porch, their own separate entrance, their own two-deep parking lots, their parking spaces. This rendering here is, again, looking from the rear of the site to the street. You know, we've captured some of the plantings, but again, you don't get the full effects. It costs a lot of money to rent in the whole neighborhood, but it gives you a good idea of what it's going to look like when it's all built.
Four of these will be affordable?
Four will be affordable.
And have we decided which four they are?
We marked them on our original submission, but we're going to revise the layout. As Bob said, we have a set of plans we need to file with you folks that address Mr. Laney's comments, so we'll update that on the next set. But yeah, it'll be four affordables. It's a nice-looking project. It's consistent with what's being built in Lakeville right now. And as Bob said, you know, Paul does a nice job on his houses, so, you know, this is something that I think will be a good project for the town and it's a good fit. With that being said, I'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
I had a communication the other day from our building inspector to remind the board, which I think is to remind the engineering folks, and I'm hoping Nick is hearing this too, that we have some kind of plans in the works for Route 79, and we want to make sure that your plans and their plans don't somehow conflict so that there's, two parties are claiming the same piece of work, the same piece of land. I also want to make sure that if those plans, and I don't know those plans, but if those plans have a sidewalk, then we'll probably want a sidewalk.
Like I said, not a problem. Just board wants that.
We absolutely want to make sure that whatever you guys do is in concert with what the state's going to do on the highway. Nick, you sent us a very complete, I thank you for your very complete list of observations and concerns. Do you have anything additional that we should add to this?
We talked a lot about our previous, that's, I think, all the comments I have. I mean, again, just a little concern about the steepness around the cul-de-sac. It suggested doing ripracks and putting two-way slope. The guardrail, it's a two-to-one slope, lining on the... I hear you. Yes, on the driveway going back up to the catch basin, it's a two-to-one slope, rated about two-to-one. It buries the shoulders, so we suggest we're putting a guardrail around that section of the cul-de-sac.
And you can see that thick line is the guardrail that Nick requested, and there's a note here to say ripract that slope.
And I remember when we had, some years back, when Bridge Street, I think it's Bridge Street Crossing is the name of it, down by Walgreens, the developer had some pretty deep and steep catch basins that really needed guardrails. He put them in immediately, but I'm glad that you picked that up and we addressed it. I do want to just mention for the record that we have some communication. We have a February 19 memo from the Conservation Commission. The commission has received a request for determination of applicability for the site. The request is for determination of wetlands based on size, both volume and depth, in accordance with the Wetlands Protection Act. No work is proposed in this application. If it is determined that this small wetland area is non-jurisdictional, no further action would be required. If the wetland is subject to regulation, a notice of intent would be required. A hearing on this application is scheduled for March 10, 2020, and I think you mentioned that. We have a February 20 memo from, this is from the Fire Department, and it was sent to the Planning Board. We have a copy. This letter has been written to provide notification of concerns regarding the Old Field Estates project. The Fire Department has no objection to the dimensions of the proposed road and/or cul-de-sac, as well as specifications, as all specifications are fire code compliant. Although beyond the jurisdiction of the Fire Department, the width of the proposed road does appear to be less than the 24 feet in width, as required by the bylaw for minor roads. Again, this item is outside the scope of our jurisdiction and is only mentioned as an observation. A wider road would, however, improve Fire Department access. At the time of the walkthrough of this property, it was communicated by the Fire Department that a hydrant would be needed at the beginning of the road. The exact location determined by practicality and convenience. The condition is based on the need to not lay fire hose across Rhode Island Road. Vehicle traffic would surely make such an effort impossible and would result in the interruption of fire suppression, water supply. There does not appear to be a compliant hydrant identified on the submitted plans. Please contact the Lakeville Fire Department should additional informational clarification be required. I think you mentioned that...
I can quickly address that. Yeah, totally my error is, this is the hydrant here, the existing hydrant here that was not shown on the plan, and that's because I had that layer turned off on this plan that the fire chief saw. So this is the one existing, and now he's getting another one inside the site.
And you've put his mind at ease with this?
I have not yet, because I just saw that letter today. So we will, we will follow up.
What size water main are they planning on putting down in the project? What size water main are you planning down into the project?
Eight-inch.
Eight-inch. And does the chief, is chief satisfied that sufficient for her to women?
Yeah, it's only a six-inch pipe that feeds the each hydrant, so the eight-inch is more than enough for this.
Okay, I'd like to see, make sure he's okay with that. See what he said about...
Yeah, we'll discuss the whole thing with him and make sure he's good with everything.
Moving along, we have a February 7 memo from the Board of Health. The Board of Health reviewed the petition for the above-referenced property at the February 5 meeting. At this time, the Board of Health has no proposed septic plan. Board would need to review and approve those plans prior to any construction. As for the project in general, the Board finds no issues. Do you have plans to get your plans to the Board of Health?
Well, is this board aware that's a permit that this board doesn't issue? That's under the jurisdiction of Board of Health. Before we go to file for our building permits, we will have those plans submitted to the Board of Health, so...
Perfect.
We can have it done here.
Good, thank you. And finally, we have a memo from the Planning Board, February 18, 2020. At their Thursday, February 13, 2020 meeting, the Planning Board reviewed the above-referenced petition for hearing from the Board of Appeals. The Board would like to know if any consideration has been given to submitting the application to this project as a 40R. The Planning Board would also like the zoning board to inquire from the developer if they have draft or approved condo documents that can be reviewed.
I can adjust the condo docs. We haven't provided any, prepared any docs at this time. I assume this board, if it's going to approve this project, would require that town council review saying, if the board is inclined to see a draft sample, I'm happy to provide it.
I think we're just a conduit for that message to you.
Okay, fair enough.
Don't shoot the message.
I'm not shooting my thing. Gun is put away.
What else do we want to ask them? Nick, do we need anything more? Do you need anything more?
Just revised plans.
Revised plans, sorry? That's in your...
Yeah, not a problem, and just to, not to put words in Nick's mouth, but he asked us for some information on soil information at the two infiltration basin locations. So we got that information from Nick on, I believe, Tuesday, and we went out there yesterday and dug a test bit in this infiltration basin location and in this one, so we got that information. We're getting that to Nick, we'll get it to him tomorrow, and he'll, at that time, make sure that the drainage is all set, because he didn't have the proper information to be able to comment on that.
I just have a question of clarity. Mr. Laney said something about wanting the fence for infiltration basin one. Which one is basin one?
This one's mine. Sorry. This one's basin one, this one's basin two. So there's a, there's a, this is that, the area that's, that we're going in front of the Conservation Commission is this lowest area right here, and regardless of what is determined at the Conservation Commission, we're not going to have any impacts to that. We've provided a retaining wall to keep us away from that area, whether or not it's determined to be a wetland or not. And so what Nick asked us to do is put a fence up along, either on top of the wall or what we did is, we proposed it right in front of it. And again, I've already added that to the plan. It's hard for you guys to see at the scale, but it's on there, so that fence is there.
Do we have any more questions that we could pose to the developer or the engineer? We're going to gather data tonight. I think we have quite a bit now. Town Council is not able to join us tonight. Will be available when you come back with your updated plans, I presume, next month. Nick, are you available? Is there anybody here at this point who would ask questions or would like to comment on this proposed 40B development? Yes, ma'am. She was first.
Oh, yeah. Well, hi. Janie Ariello. I live in Lakeville. You know, when we moved into Lakeville...
Come on, come on, speak into the microphone.
Well, when we moved into Lakeville, we loved Lakeville because of the size of the lots, and we loved that you had land and you had neighbors, but they weren't on top of you, and it was a beautiful area. My concern, a couple of things. I've seen a few little areas that have been mass populated. The train station, further down 79, there's a grouping of duplexes, let's say.
LeBaron.
Oh, no. LeBaron, plus a little further down, there's another little tuckaway.
Water Street, yeah.
I don't know what it's called.
The one up the hill.
They're popping up a lot, and I just wanted to know, is this going to be like the norm? Are we going to see every two acres of land in Lakeville built up with condos? You know, that's...
That's a very good question, and let me try and answer, but anybody here can correct my answer if I'm wrong. The, there are, the Affordable Housing Law says that towns have to have a certain percentage of their dwelling units to be affordable. And might keep me honest, because I think it's changed, but at one time, it was you had to have 10% or you had to be increasing at a rate of 3/4 of a percent per year, I think.
For what? For what? For what?
The number of units that you're adding.
It was half a percent or 1%.
It's smart growth.
Tom had some safe harbor.
When are we going to meet that quota?
Percentage of residents that are classified as affordable.
We'll not meet it.
Well, actually, we've been doing pretty well.
Do we have to meet it? I mean...
No.
We do have to meet it.
Why? To get what? I mean, there's got to be something for, the reason we have to meet it is what?
State mandated.
I don't know, I don't know how they slap our wrists, but they'll find a way.
If you don't put in more affordable housing, the town will get what?
If, if we do not reasonably approve a plan, might keep me honest, because you know more about the law than I do. If we do not reasonably approve a plan, and we've been reasonable in approving plans, if we do not reasonably approve a plan, then the state can give permission for the developer to develop above and beyond any control that we have.
A developer can tell us, a developer can tell us how our town's going to develop? I mean...
Essentially, yes.
Really?
Yes. The 40B law is, goes back to the 60s, and it was originally intended, I'm going to speak frankly, it was originally intended for towns to be able to sidestep their own bylaws in order to do what would be the right thing. Hold on. That was the original intent. There was very little development until 15 or 20 years ago, when developers discovered that that law was there, and they had a lot more control over the development of a piece of land if it conformed to the affordable housing, the 40B affordable housing bylaw or state law. And we've had to comply with that.
Yeah.
We have, I think, what, now, five or six 40B developments in town.
Yeah, that seems like a lot. I mean, just for a town that, you know, we've been here almost 30 years.
So people like, people like you and many others come up and they complain and rant and rave and scream at us for allowing things that we are compelled by law to consider and to grant. We have almost, we have almost no authority to deny these. The most that we can do...
So if I want to put on my property...
May I finish?
Oh, yeah, no, no, I'm sorry.
The most that we can do is work with developers to help mold or shape or structure the project in order to benefit the town as much as possible, as well as benefiting or as well as meeting the strict requirements of the law. If you want to put something on your property, you could try. But you need a building permit.
No, my other question, I thank you for that. No, my other question, I thank you for that. I remember when the hospital closed some time ago, probably just a couple of years prior to us moving here, maybe a year before. When that closed, I remember there was nothing happening for years. Of course, because it was toxic. There was toxic waste. Nobody could do anything with it. We were hoping Cisco was coming in. But the people on Rush Pond Road didn't want that. Now, I wonder how Rush Pond Road is going to feel with 18 septic, or 16 septic systems pumping down into their wells? Do they know?
We're here.
Rush Pond Road? Well, I mean, you know.
He's going to make a lot of noise.
Oh, okay. All right.
I say that, I say, I say that in a friendly way. He's been here before. He's going to make himself heard. There isn't much that we can do about that legally. We, we can't turn him down. We can work with the developer, we cannot turn them down.
Well, it sounds like it's already a done deal.
We can, we can, we can work with the developer to change some things in the, in the plan that are mutually beneficial.
I think mutually beneficial would be instead of eight, four.
May I suggest something? May I suggest something?
Yes.
Come back next month and in the intervening months, study the 40B law and find out what we can and can't do so you understand. We can't, we can't meet what you would like us to do. We can't do what you want us to do. You'd like us to say, nope, no developer, no way.
I would like to buy, well, I'd like to buy two acres of lot, you know, two acres of property and be able to put up.
You can.
I can?
You can.
All right.
Come back with a 40B plan.
I think both sides need to come more familiar with 40B as well, this board should.
I'm sorry?
This board should become a little bit more familiar with 40B.
I don't know, we've been grappling with it.
It seems all too convenient.
For quite a while.
I don't know, not for the townspeople. I don't see where we're benefiting, you know, as townspeople. And Rush Pond Road?
The state mandates, as David said. Dick?
Yeah, first of all, I'd like to introduce myself to this fine gentleman. My name's Dick Scott. How do you do, Mr. Slaney?
Okay. He, obviously, is important, so I was wondering if you could tell me who you are?
I'm a civil engineer, consultant to various town boards and government to ask.
So, you're on the town's side?
I'm on the town's side. If I look at it, it's an engineer.
He's paid, he's paid by the petitioner.
My questions are very brief. The timing of the project, if everything went exactly the way the builder would like, how soon would you be in the field? How soon would you be finished and selling these properties? I'm asking.
You're asking through.
You the question.
I got it.
Right.
Depending on how long this, this process takes, you know, if it's three, four months, whatever it is, we still have to get final approval from the subsidizing agency, which is mass housing. So, I guess the earliest, we're in what, 5th of March now? So, probably fall. And I'm guessing it'd take 18 to 24 months to build everything.
I'm just curious of what the selling price is anticipated. I'm sure it's a range, but also what the affordable housing portion of that price might be.
I have, that's a hard question to answer because we haven't established what condo fees are going to be right now. The market value, I think duplex units like this are 350 end up.
Is that per unit?
Per unit. And the, don't hold me to the price here, but I think the affordable rate is going to be in the neighborhood of 190, 192. Again, I haven't done the calculation, but that's.
That's close enough.
In the range.
Has there been any consideration to any of these properties being age restricted within the scope of your project? Obviously, seniors could buy them, depending on what your selling price is.
Right now, we're not planning to restrict this guy's project.
One of the things that I'm concerned about is the proximity of these new houses to the landfill, the famous landfill that's on the hospital. Do you know the distance of the closest residence to that landfill property?
That's a good question.
So, upon information and belief, the solid waste area is over here someplace. DEP has this 100-foot buffer, if you will. It's an unpublished rule they like to follow, similar to a wetland buffer. If that buffer was extended out, it would be under this little parcel here. But within that buffer, there is no, no waste. The waste is all over here. So, if anything were to happen, it could be just some monitoring wells or whatever it is that would be installed.
I think Dick asked a good question. Could we get that confirmed by next, by our next meeting?
The location?
Yeah.
We can give you the approximate location, sure. The reason I ask the question is, under the current waste laws, a fence around that waste area is considered the reasonable to keep trespassers out of the area. If you ever do risk assessments on these under DEP's regs, they talk about eco-risk and human health risk, and a fence is considered. Capping is considered, but there's always a fence and then you have to do a risk assessment if the guy hops the fence and, you know, the trespasser. Do you have any idea how far Rush Pond Route, or Rush Pond itself is from all this?
The easiest way to do it is to look at that one. Look at this one, it has a little bit of a scale on it. So, where's Rush Pond? Callsack.
Right over here? So, where?
We're right next to you.
That's 200 feet, so you're... About 24, about half a mile?
Okay. All righty. That's this here, right here. That's the pond.
Oh, okay, sorry. I thought you said this one here.
No.
1500 feet.
Okay, that's fine. There's a fairly significant elevation drop between your property and Rush Pond Road. I don't know if you've noticed it, but it goes up like this. And the reason I know is I used to dump leaves back here, okay? I just want to make sure that we, as we develop this over here, there's some attention paid to the grading along that back edge of your property?
These are actually.
Up by 79 is not an issue, but further back here it is.
Yeah, we have all the contours shown on the existing conditions plan and on the proposed plan, so you can welcome to review those. These are contours on this plan. And these are 10-foot contours.
Okay.
So, every one of these lines drops down 10 feet. So, you're right, this is higher, then it drops down, drops down. And in the back of Mr. Turner's property, as it goes towards that landfill, that's on the body, the landfill's on the body of the project, not on this project. And it drops out quite a bit there. I think they mined that for sand and gravel for the construction of 79.
And it became a household appliance dump and a whole lot of other stuff back there. Nick, do you also work for the Planning Board?
Yes.
Great. Great. Now, just so I understand, when you submit, because you're allowed to bypass planning, blah, 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 but they do give courtesy review to comment? Is that what I heard on this letter?
I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
In other words, at some point, I've gained a lot of respect over the years now of what our Planning Board does. And I appreciate what you guys do also. But I just want to make sure that the expertise that resides with the Planning Board at least has a chance to see it, even though you're not required. And I just, I assume that that would be through Nick? Is that how that's going to work? When they finally submit plans to somebody, I guess for the building permit, is that where that happens?
I'm still not sure I understand what your question is.
The construction, the construction project at some point has plans.
You know, they have to go to the, to the building inspector.
Okay. But does the Planning Board at that phase also have a chance to review the plans?
Just so the Board knows and everybody's clear, Mr. Turner and an associate of mine met with the Planning Board to discuss this project as the courtesy that we talked about.
Right.
So, they were presented with this project, I believe, last, right? I don't remember exactly when, but sometime last year.
To answer your question, Dick, in a more general sense, one of the requirements the zoning board has is that the plans that we get here, a copy of those plans goes to the Conservation Commission, a copy goes to the Planning Board, a copy goes to the Board of Health, et cetera, et cetera. There's something like 16 sets of plans.
Right.
Expensive plans that go all over, I'm sorry?
35.
35 sets of plans that go all over the place.
Okay.
And so, the Boards, some Boards are very diligent about reviewing and providing their feedback to us. Some recipients are less so. And it really often depends upon the nature of the project.
The reason I'm asking the question is because we have the expertise in town. And if this didn't go 40B, you'd be dealing with the Planning Board as well as the building inspector. And only if something popped up, would it end up here. And I assume that the Planning Board would have a courtesy review. But I'm also trying to make the link between the engineer that has already looked at it, that he's, he's kind of like the same guy that's involved in the courtesy review that the Planning Board would get as part of the variance board's remit.
Well, for a 40B project, which results in what's called a comprehensive permit, the zoning Board, this Board, by definition, reviews the comprehensive permit request. That's our job.
And I'm just looking to see if there is an opportunity for the Planning Board to make courtesy comments the way that it's been described. Put another way, right now, you're doing conceptual.
I think they do. I think we get them.
We had that courtesy meeting with them. They also have sets of the plans that they are able to review. And that's, that's the resulting letter, that comment letter that Mr. Foster read earlier, was the result of that review of the actual plans that we came forward with. It was just in a preliminary stage where we met with them initially.
Right. Is there something in particular that?
Yeah, I'm going to lead to two more things, and then I'm done. You, you impressed me with having the exact number of landscape. Normally, you don't get that much detail. And so far, many of the people in the neighborhood have made comments to me about their concerns about the number of units, et cetera. Within the limitation, based on that elevation, the one thing that keeps popping up is the aesthetics. And I'm just appealing that there might be some opportunity that some of those trees go along that edge to help visually. So, I mean, pine trees can grow up pretty tall 30 years from now. We're just looking at that there are some of your.
Could I just ask what edge you're talking about?
I'm talking about the, the butters.
The butters? I want to be perfectly clear that there is a building lot in between Mr. Turner's land and the people on the Rush Pond Road. It is not about that property. There's a lot in between him and the Rush Pond Road people. So, that's, that's a wooded lot and we have no control over what happens with that. So, there'll be a wooded buffer there.
So, you're, so there's, there's an open space back here?
These are the lots, the back of the lots from Rush Pond Road. This road, this lot is not under Mr. Turner's control.
That's going to stay.
I have no idea. That's not, he does not own that, so I.
Okay, so show me where your lots are on that.
Right, two armed lots.
So, there will be a buffer there?
Well, yeah, there's a lot, there's a lot there.
Yeah, okay, no problem. And then the last thing is, a while back, we got a letter on Rush Pond Road about the possibility of gas coming into Rush Pond Road off of Route 79. And I'm wondering if the project has looked at the possibility? Because gas is something that might be considered greener than fuel oil, blah, blah.
We absolutely are going to explore that option with the gas company.
That's all I have.
Anybody else? Nick, you had your hand up.
Just want to comment, when I'm doing my review of the water utilities, I look at the planning board rules and regulations for some guidance in seeing how compliant that is with their guidance. So, in a way, I'm kind of reviewing it with the planning board. At least with respect to their regulations.
You're reviewing it for the town, for everybody in town. Okay, we have, yes, sir?
Yeah, I have a few things. Now, I understand you're saying something about next month. So, does this mean that most of this is, is just what? This doesn't count, or?
No, 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 no. With 40Bs, I don't think that we, there's ever been a 40B hearing that's only gone for one month. This is following at the sort of general standard format that we have an introduction where they present the plans. We get to ask questions. And we review the concerns that the consulting engineer has raised. He raised those concerns. He raised it before with the petitioners, the project engineer. And we resolve those questions and those issues. You heard questions come up that are looking to be resolved.
Okay, I don't know who this gentleman is, but just like he said, I think we need to do a little more research on the 40B. There's 361 towns and cities in Massachusetts.
Right.
There's currently over 42 that have zero 40B. And there's 50% of the towns that have less than 5%. There is no penalties, no fees for denying a 40B. The only recourse for the 40B developer is that he can appeal it to the state and then basically can do what he wants. Judging from this, I don't think there's much more he can do. Now, I read a letter from, and I don't know if I'm the only one that got any of this information, but the current unit price is going to be, as slated on the letter, worth $396 for the 12 and $196 for the four affordable. That was going to be the price, by the way. The only towns that are currently at 10%, and I know for some reason, the 40B and everybody associated with the town is 10%, 10%, 10%. If you look, the only current 40B compliance of 10% of towns like Far River, New Benefit, Brocton, Framingham, Cambridge. I don't know if you want our town to become one of them, but that's what you're shooting for when everybody says 10%, 10%, 10%. All the questions I've asked for all those projects, when somebody finally gave me answers down in Town Hall, that's the only answer I got. 40B, 40B, 40B. Any question I have? Now, I don't know if you realize it, but yes, these look awful pretty. But these are going to be 35 feet tall. That's the same height as a three-decker. That's 35 feet. Now, you're going to have eight 35-feet structures in one area. 35 feet's pretty tall. I don't know if you've ever seen the three-decker, but this is how tall they're going to be. Now, on the proposed thing over here, the one down here, this is a very bad stretch of, of road. My telephone pole, oh, by the way, I live right across the street at 43. My telephone pole has been hit two times in three years from wrong way traffic. What do you think it's going to be like when you've got three more people or three more egress spots right in front of that area? With potentially 62 cars coming out of all those spots? I don't think it's going to be very safe there. I think if you're even proposing any of this, there needs to maybe be only one egress. Maybe they can change the other house so you don't have three egresses onto the road. I know this may slightly add to cost or may not give them as much profit as he wants. And I understand it's all about profit. You know, this for the town is windfall. You go from getting $5,000 in taxes to $70,000 in taxes. So, yes, it's a win-win for the town, but it's not for the residents that live around it. I mean, so I would propose that you ask them to lower the height of the buildings, to not make three egresses onto an already dangerous road. And from what I understand, and I know you spoke to a gentleman about sidewalks in the proposed 79. in the proposed 79 stuff, from what I understand, that 79 project isn't even going down our way. It's stopping at Clear Pond Road. So there's going to be no new road, no sidewalks in that 79 proposed plan. And maybe put a stop sign at Rush Point Road to slow the traffic down. I don't know if any of yous live anywhere near there, but it's like a racetrack right there. And like I said, with three more egresses onto that road, it's going to be a very dangerous spot for all the new residents that you have and all the current residents that live across the street.
We don't, this board doesn't control stop signs.
I know, but this board-
Anywhere than you do.
No, but it does, because this board controls, now, from what I read in the 40B stuff, it said usually the town residents in the board and the developer really never agree. But there's compromises. I get to hear any compromises from the developer. And the one compromise that I've heard is that the first document on the thing, which I believe is from this gentleman's office, because of the wasteland that was there, they changed the proposed nine-house development into eight duplexes, which I don't understand how that makes it any better, making nine families near the waste to making 16 families near the waste, which I don't understand how that's a compromise. But I would like to know how-
Well, I suggest-
How these, the developer has compromised to help the residents.
I suggest you prepare a list of the compromises you'd like.
I just, I just told you.
Bring them next, prepare a list of the compromises you'd like, present them to the developer next month, and see if he'd like to compromise.
Okay, so this is a multi, this is a multi-month thing? I mean, quite frankly, you know, I'm one of the helping Lakeville site. Somebody from the town made a comment about, you know, they're basically tired of people helping Lakeville site, commenting about projects for the town and not being involved. You know, I try to get involved. I come to the meetings, and now I'm going to have to go to meeting, the meeting, the meeting, the meeting. I go down to the Town Hall, I went to seven different departments in the Town Hall on a Friday, asked about all this stuff. Everybody looked at me like I asked about the alien ship that landed at the hospital.
You're frustrated because-
No, 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 I'm not frustrated, but listen, these are the facts.
You're frustrated.
That was on a Friday. On Monday was a holiday. On Tuesday morning, on the Lakeville website, all of a sudden, there's a meeting on Tuesday about the Lakeville 79 project. I don't understand how on Friday, I can ask for an hour at the Town Hall about this project, nobody knows anything, nobody gives me any answers, but yet Tuesday morning, they're saying there's a meeting being held about it. So I'm trying to get involved, but nobody's giving me answers, and everybody keeps telling me to come back. Do you see my frustration? That's my frustration. Somebody tells me to get involved, but come to the meetings, and I get nothing.
Now, my turn. This is not the place for you to air your frustrations with town communication. This is a zoning board meeting, we're deliberating on a 40B petition.
I commend you on attending time. I think you've done a good job presenting your-
We are going to clean the hospital property up, or we're just going to build around it? Because I think that's what we're doing.
We can't go there. That's not, that's not what we're here to talk about.
Okay, so-
I understand that people are frustrated about things.
No, you don't look frustrated about-
Please, it's my turn, it's my turn. We, for years, we have been coming here every month as volunteers to do this job. You come one night and you're complaining because you have to come back next month. That's what I'm hearing from you.
Because-
You want to get involved in town?
Because I have a job.
Join a committee, you want to do something useful for the town, join a board, join a committee, and meet every month or twice a month to make decisions and make things happen.
That's the decision-
Like these members have done.
That's the decision you made.
Well, you're expressing your frustration.
I'm not frustrated. I came here and I voiced my suggestions like you asked for, right? You asked for what I thought would make this project better. I told you, lower the height of the building.
List them down.
Put up a stop sign. I mean, make not three egresses on an already dangerous road.
Mike, have you got any of these suggestions down?
I've got it all written down, if I may, Mr. Chairman. If there's any neighbor who wants to meet with the developer and talk about their concerns, we're happy to sit and meet and listen and see if there's something we can do. If there's something we can do within reason, we're happy to do it. If we can't, we can't. But that's-
But one thing, but I want to say something to you and to some other folks here. This is not a complaint board. We're not here to listen to your snivels and complaints and your whining about what org you can be on or whether they've cleaned up the hospital property. That's not what we're concerned about. We're concerned about meeting the bylaws. And we have to focus on the petitions and the content of those petitions, make sure that they meet the bylaws. That's what we're worried about.
Okay, you asked for my concerns and complaints. Don't say they're whining, because I think that's unprofessional, and you asked me for my voices and my concerns. These are my voices and concerns. So if you want to sit here and say I'm whining, I don't think you should be on the board. I mean, really, the-
John, would it be unreasonable to ask for a traffic study for this impact on that Route 79? I know Route 79 is a horrendous cause.
Thank you. And it's not even under- This project isn't even under the new proposal of Route 79.
Present your list of issues that you'd like the developer to consider compromising on, and we'll talk about them next month.
Okay, thank you.
That's all we can do. Sir?
Could I, I can quickly put to bed one of this gentleman's concerns. The buildings, I'm not exactly sure where the 35-foot height came from.
Well, ask him, he's the expert, he's the expert.
They're approximately 27.
You know, please don't do that.
You're the one who's claimed 35 feet.
Because I got an email here right from, I got an email right on my phone from the selectmen.
Ask-
And the first page of it is from this attorney, so don't tell me I'm the expert. Please don't run your mouth like that.
Are these buildings 35 feet high?
No.
All right.
I got an email right here from the selectmen.
Stop, please. Okay, do we need anything else tonight? Nick, do you have anything else for us? Do you have anything else for us?
Jay has a question. Give it mine, I'm sorry, I was standing because I thought perhaps you couldn't see. Since the gentleman may be offered to talk with to any local people that might have to ask questions, if I could get some contact information.
Would you please come up and speak into the microphone so it gets recorded?
My name is Janet Scott, and I am from Rush Pond Road. And the gentleman offered to speak to individual people who were butters or close butters, and I just wanted to get contact information so that we could do that.
We're happy to provide it out to the hall.
Okay.
Would the developer be open to a public hearing?
This is a public hearing.
So what's next month's meeting?
I do, I do think that if you're going to, if you have questions, I think Jerry made a good point, that it would be good to have those, that occur in a public format, if you don't mind. And the right way to do it is simply to come back to the continued hearing, which I think we're going to plan for next month.
Okay, next month, we'll put the date then.
And I go back to the point this gentleman made. If we simply have a list of the issues that he wants to find compromise on, then we'll talk about them.
I just want to say, and I hope this doesn't come across as complaining or whatever, but through the years, as the, as the hospital was closed down, many of us in the surrounding area, Rush Pond and other people, tried to participate with the various people when national development was the voice of the owners of the Lakeville Hospital property. We worked for months, attending meeting after meeting over months to go through the various plans that they had when they hoped to have, when they hoped to have a target and a stop and shop and all those kinds of things. And some of the discussion about the back property along 79 included some of the kinds of things that these gentlemen are talking about. So it's not news to us that this kind of thing would be considered. But we do have concerns being close by, and having concerns that were also brought up earlier about the fact that these properties will be getting torn in water. But then they will have 16, will there be 16 septic, or only eight septic?
There'll be eight, there'll be one for each building.
One for each building. Those of us who live close by have our own well, and we have, you know, we have our own water. And so therefore, anything that is going to be septic systems, we are concerned that it would all be done properly and done with the proper amount of space around it and so on and so forth. That's why I asked to have an opportunity.
The Board of Health handles all that.
Okay. All right, I just wanted to make sure I could get the contact information.
Okay, so, continue to next one. What's the date? March 20? March 19?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to ask one more question.
Go ahead, Dick.
If I heard you right, you asked members of the group who want to have comment to the board that we should come next week or the next month, next meeting with a list of questions. I'd like to suggest that perhaps we send you those questions as soon as we have them put together and not necessarily wait for the next meeting, and just bring up those things that we feel are important. And I think you asked that gentleman right there to bring a list, whatever. I'd like to say that that-
I want to make sure that everything, I want to make sure everything we've done, everything that we do conforms to the requirements of the open meeting law.
I understand.
And so I don't, I want to avoid anything that gives the appearance of behind-the-scenes discussions or-
So you want us to bring a list of questions that we have?
Right.
I have been asked to come to all the meetings and bring some of the questions. Is that acceptable?
Sure.
Okay. I feel that we got something very positive out of tonight. A way to communicate to the board, and the contractor and the owner have offered us direct input and conversation. I view that as very positive. And I want to just say, instead of complaining, I'm happy to see housing go next to other housing if it's done right. And I believe, based on what I've heard, we're going to have the input that the butters and the Lakeville residents would like to have. And I find that very encouraging.
Thank you, Dick. Okay, you have a request to continue to, I think it's March 19? March 19, 7 o'clock, here. I'd like a motion to accept the petitioner's request for continuous to March 19. John has made a motion.
Second.
Jim has seconded, is there any further discussion? Are you in none, all in favor, please?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other business tonight? Minutes?
Minutes.
These are long minutes.
Because they didn't want to pay for it.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
You know what, this is the reason why I didn't go. About the press? Because they-
I don't care. But he was wrong, he made the-
They probably said you go up 30 feet, because that's exactly my law.
I'm frustrated when people come here just circling, playing in a puddle.
Have we looked at the minutes? I've read them. Have we looked at the minutes?
Yes.
Any provisions? Motion to approve. Second?
Motion's been made and seconded.
Is there any discussion here in none, all in favor?
Aye.
Do we have any other business tonight? We are adjourned. It is 8:46.